Morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of... I guess so. Of February 13, 2023. Please note, the meeting is being taped and recorded for future or live. I'm not sure. I think it's future tonight, right? We're not live.
It's live.
It is live. Okay, we're live. All right. 6:30. Chairman's comments, first item. I don't have any further comments tonight. Oh, yeah. Why don't you do that? Motion, open the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My big thing for the night.
You're good. Item number two, 386 Washington Street, Chase Bank, HVAC modifications. Anybody here for that?
I believe the Caesar and Josh are online, and I will pull up the... As you're aware, Mr. Chairman, the applicant had put a very large HVAC equipment on top of the building. We told them that they really couldn't screen it, so they moved it down to the bottom of the building, to the side, and they put in a two-sided wall. I don't have any... I apologize, I don't have any photos, but you can see under this isometric view, number one, that I have. It blends in. The only thing is, the air hood comes slightly above it. If you've driven by the site, you know, their dumpster enclosure and this enclosure match the building. I think, I feel they've done a really good job, and...
We don't have any photo...
Huh?
We don't have any photos of it, right?
I do not. Caesar, do you or Josh have photos?
If you go down Central Street, you'll see that.
We don't have any on hand. Let me go through my emails and see if I could pull any for you.
When we did the site inspection, it blends in well. They put it in the landscape area. They just shifted the landscape in front of the wall, and...
I could see it from a distance. I just didn't know what it looked like as you were coming around, but I decided to want to see if there are any close-up photos.
Yeah, it's... And I apologize, I don't have any photos.
You do a site inspection, you didn't get any photos? Really? I mean, come on now, come on.
I don't. Does Nick have any? Are they on the drive? Are they on the drive? I will see if we have some on the Asville Drive.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kenneth Spence. I'm with the architectural firm TPG. I do have a photo I could share, but I'm trying to figure out how to use this meeting software. I've never used it before.
There's a little arrow button that says "Share," and then you share the window that you have.
No.
Says I'm sharing. Do you guys... Does everyone see my screen?
I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what's shown is the enclosure for the HVAC system.
Is there any gate on the... Oh, so the hood still does come above that. Is there any gate on the other side of it?
No, it's just open.
Just open.
Is that the air intake?
Yes, that's the air intake.
Okay.
It has to come up. They painted it to match the building. You know, and this view here is, you know... You have to be really totally around the building.
Well, that'd be, there's a drive-through or something that's around there, right?
Yeah, you're interior to the site when you see it.
You're way interior to the site to see this.
So you wouldn't see it coming around the drive-through or anything?
No.
No, from the drive-through, it's not visible.
Because the drive-through's on the other side.
Correct.
If you take a left at the building... Yeah.
Yeah. If you take the... If you take your... If you come in off of Washington Street, and you're going... And you're like going to the dumpster, towards the dumpster, and then you veer to the left, and that's where you see it.
Right, and that's how you would get around to the drive-through if you're coming off of Washington Street. So you would use that lane, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I thought. All right, anybody else have any questions on that?
What is... And it's probably a small point, but that almost acts as a collecting point, leaves, debris, and everything else.
That's just up to them to clean up.
That's their maintenance issue.
So we're just gonna accept this as a minor modification or just...
If you just want to accept it and vote to approve it, then I can, I'll just put it in the file, because they have not closed the project out yet.
Can I have a motion to accept this as a minor modification?
So made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys turn your mics on.
You're good.
Okay, you can...
Aye.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number three, 1580 Turnpike Street, gas station, site plan modification, request for building... Request... To the building elevation. Request what to the building elevation?
They modified. I'm going to that right now. So I do not know is... I guess the applicant's not on. The top sheet for when Prestige had it was gonna have this little gabled roof with the three little lights. During the construction, they took the gable out and they put a rectangular board. It's where they're gonna have their... They're gonna have their sign, no matter what. It just got rid of the gable. We actually noticed it during construction and told them they had to come in for a modification to discuss it with the board.
Are they here?
No. Do you want to continue?
Come back next weekend.
We'll postpone this till they log in. So they were sent the invite.
I was actually laughing at the comment, and it said that the contractor didn't have the building for it, because he didn't realize the change.
Well, I will...
We don't want to discuss that.
I can let you know that the applicant bought this from Prestige and bought the everything, the plans and everything, so...
My question is with that, does the contractor...
He didn't build the Prestige. He bought the... He built another one, similar.
The plant.
Yeah.
Item number four, continued public hearing. We held a petition for a site plan approval located at 1000 Technology Drive, assessors map 105 lot 002, in an I industrial zoning district. The applicant, BOS5 Amazon Fulfillment Center, 1000 Technology Center Drive, Stoughton, Mass., represented by Ryan McCune, ASM Engineering Consultants, LLC, 221 East Commerce Avenue, Kansas, for a site plan review under section 10.6.2, for a proposed construction of two new guide shacks, installation of an automated gate system, reconfiguration, reconfiguring, and site modifications to accommodate the two guide shacks. The proposed project will increase impervious area by 4,356 plus or minus square feet. The applicant has requested waivers to sections 10.6.1, B, C, D, and E development impact report, to not provide a visual impact, environmental impact, economic impact, and community impact assessments, continued from 3/8/24, 5/9/24, 7/11/24, 8/22/24, 9/26/24, 10/17/24, 11/14/24, 2/13/24, request withdrawal of application.
They're requesting to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Can I have a motion to accept that they want to withdraw it? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, continued public hearing. Continued public hearing. Public hearing will be held at the petition for a site plan review located at 120 Stockwell Drive, assessors map 92 lots 22 and 24, in an I industrial zone, applicant Costco Wholesale Corporation, 45940 Horseshoe Drive, Sterling, Virginia, represented by Kevin Gargan, Esquire, Gulstein, and Stores PC, One Post Office Square, Boston, Mass., for a site plan review under section 10.6.2. For the members-only fuel facility consists of a freestanding canopy and equipment enclosure, clerk-in-the-loop enclosure, and 12 dispensers, providing 24 refueling positions. Continued... Requesting it continues to March 27, 2025. Can I have a motion to accept that continuance?
So made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continued public hearing. We held the petition of applicant Gene Caesar, 11141 Central Street, Stoughton, represented by J.K. Homer, Engineering, Brockton, Mass., for a site plan review under sections 10.6.2, for the proposed development of 1,500 square foot building with associated infrastructure, site grading, and landscaping. The proposed use of the building is for an office building and garage to house the applicant's fuel trucks, a special permit per section 9.3.4.7 and 10.5 for accessory storage or commercial vehicles, which are more than 3/4 tonne as required. The project is located at 19 Morton Square, assessors map 54 lot 407, in Stoughton Center District, Flex Zoning District, continued from 9/26/24 and 12/19/24. Before we open this meeting, can Mr. Terry...
I will be recusing myself.
Thank you very much. Can I have the applicant come before us, Spence?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney John McDermott, for the applicant Gene Caesar, with Scott Rogers, J.K. Homer, Engineering.
Green, yeah, I can pull it to you.
Apologize. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney John McDermott for the applicant Gene Caesar. With me here is Scott Rogers from J.K. Homer, Engineering. I only recently submitted the materials you have in front of you, but what I discussed with Mr. Roth is that my hope is that I could discuss this with the board, kind of make our presentation, and I know certainly the board needs to review these materials, but if there were any questions, kind of initially that the board members may have, that might be helpful, I could maybe address those kind of subsequently, because I think we're kind of paring down to just a singular issue here. I do want to just let Mr. Rogers lead with kind of a wrap-up on the technical and engineering comments from the technical review memorandum.
Mr. Chairman, I think for the record, we need to state that Mr. Terry has...
He did say that.
Oh, I didn't hear him.
Yeah, he said, "I'm recusing myself from the meeting in Washington."
Oh, I didn't hear him. Yeah, I didn't... He may not have been on the microphone, that Mr. Terry has recused himself, and he has left the thing, for the record.
For the record, my name is Scott Rogers from J.K. Homer, Engineering. So we did receive a comment letter back September 18th, and we did do a response.
You're on, but you gotta put it closer to you. I'm sorry.
And we did have a response letter that was dated January 27th. We also received some comments from engineering in... Basically, the comment was to create a septic plan for the site. We did that. That was submitted December 9th. And then we got some comments from the town planner regarding the building elevation. Those building elevations were revised, and those were sent on January 23rd. The last set of review comments that we had, we ended up putting a liner between the stormwater system and the septic system, and then we added some grading contours and spot grades to the proposed pavement out in Morton Square. And then we did receive a letter, I believe it was this week, that said all of our engineering comments were addressed.
So, Craig, all the... Your answers to this letter or your responses, are you okay with that? Because it's still seem, when I was reading through this, there was some items that they were putting off where they were deferring to other people at some point in time.
At this point, they've addressed all the engineering-related comments.
Okay. So the other, the items as far as the hazardous materials and the occupancy issues is not in, not come from you and engineering?
It'll still need permitting through the Environmental Affairs Officer.
Okay.
That's separate from the site plan review.
Okay.
I think that's prior to issuance of the building permit. They have to get those done. And I've also put up, they revised the building, they've toned down the colors, they provided some base course, similar things that we've wanted on other buildings. I've put the elevations up. They revised their landscape plan, and they've also addressed engineering. So from a technical standpoint, we feel that they've addressed the concerns that the board's had, that staff has had, and they, really, it comes down to the issue, if you like the plans that they've submitted, it's the kind of the question, the issue of access. They did submit something today, which is, which I put in your packet. I know that the, I think it's a 16-page memo with probably 30 pages of attachments, and I think that it's discussing the project. Discuss any questions on the access, and then most likely, I'm assuming, since we've got this long legal document, that you would like our counsel most likely to weigh in on that one issue. I don't know where they will fall and weigh in on a civil issue.
I, no, but I would like the chance to review it. I'd like the board to have that chance to review, and then I do want to ask counsel to review it and just see what his response to it is. Not sure whether he's gonna weigh in or not, however, I do, I do feel that he has the... I need to give him that courtesy.
Oh, yeah, and I plan on sending it to him tomorrow.
Okay.
So, but, you know, I told them to hold the hearing. Most likely, it'll be, you know, have to continue it, but, you know, if you're fine with everything, then you've narrowed it down to one issue.
Yep, a couple of things. The double containment you would ask about, what do we talk about? Is that inside the building or outside the building? In the letter, the, one of the responses, it talks about hazardous materials, oil, other materials, a double containment system or dikes of some kind should be incorporated in case of spills to avoid the GW impact, and I would defer to Environmental Affairs Officer, but is that inside the building or outside the building?
That would be inside the building.
So only inside. We're not gonna put up any type of containment outside the building?
No.
All right, and then as far as the plumbing code goes, you're gonna have to have secondary containment for any type of oil spills anyway, so that would be handled, that would be handled underground. Okay. So the other question I have, and I just haven't had a chance to look at it yet, what were we doing about fencing around this property? Do you recall?
No fencing around the property. Excuse me, we are fencing around the trash enclosure area.
Again, no fencing around the property at all. There is an existing chain link fence in the back of the property.
That'll stay.
So that vines growing all over it, and the way that it looks right now is gonna just stay the way it is, or...
We can remove the vines and do the landscaping that needs to be done.
But you're against a residential property on the right-hand side. I thought, unless I'm mistaken, I thought we discussed about having a fence at least going down that side? That is one of the requirements when we're just adjacent to a residential property? Because you have the retaining wall, and then we're talking about a fence that was gonna go down that side.
I think if you look at the landscape plan, that we put some screening up along that side, some...
But that's not what the, that's not what the code requires. The code does require a zone, a fence separating a residential property from a commercial property.
So that would be right in here?
That's right. That would have to, there would have to be something along in there to create that. I know, I know we discussed, but I didn't think we had something that we had walked away from at that point. And a lot of that is just so because of, you know, you're living in a residential house, trying to be against a commercial or industrial property, just to have some privacy from the commercial industrial things that may be going on in that property.
There is a proposed retaining wall along that side as well, but we can add a fence.
Right, there is a retaining wall, but you still have to have a fence. I know it was, I think it's only like four feet or something at one point.
Yeah, the retaining wall right here in the bottom corner is... Top of wall is 232, bottom of wall is 228, so...
That's what it was, four feet.
Four feet, and then it goes down to approximately one feet. So what size, would you like them to put a...
The retaining wall, right, there should be, I think it's a six-foot fence that would run along that whole...
On the top of the retaining wall?
On the top of the, or, I mean, if they wanted, I suppose they could put it down along the property line, but you're gonna need a guardrail on that retaining wall anyway. I mean, even if you put a fence at the four-foot length, four-foot area, you're gonna need some sort of guard.
Yeah, so I think putting it on the fence...
The landscape plan, C8, if you look at that.
There is. It's not called out, but there's a symbol, you know, aligned with some squares along the property line.
Correct, but it's not shown on the civil drawings, all the material drawings.
Yeah, it's not labeled. There's also same thing on the other side of the property in that drawing.
Correct. Yeah, unless I'm mistaken, I don't recall that we said no fencing along that property.
Yeah, I think they can, they can add that. They need that fence on the top anyway, so they should probably just put it on, along the, only along the wall?
I would put it all the way down to the back of the property line.
Okay.
I would intersect it into the chain link fence that's existing down there, require that they clean up the chain link fence, and I understand it's, you know, I understand the chain link fence is not on your property, so without trying to put another fence up, maybe you can get permission from the owners to be able to clean that mess up that's back there. I would think you'd want to do something there anyway for your own edification. And then, so the rest of this, you're just gonna tie the grates on the left-hand side? It's a kind of a dirt road and stuff that's back there right now?
It is.
Kind of like a mess area, so it's not gonna really change. It's just gonna be, you're gonna continue dirt and road over that area, or what are you planning on doing to try to...
We'll be putting down topsoil and seeding that area.
How are you gonna keep that separated from all the trucks and the way everything just drives in that area now?
We're gonna go to our property line that we own.
I understand that, but there should be some sort of protection for, you're gonna get your own stuff ruined if somebody else isn't dealing with that, you know, with either a guardrail or something along that edge of the property, in order that it just doesn't become another area the trucks are driving on.
What side is that?
The left-hand side, the side right there.
Right here?
Yep. If you drive down there right now, it's just a sea of asphalt, dirt, and gravel, and if you just bring grass and seed over there, it's not gonna maintain anything if you don't clear some sort of area.
Would you recommend a four-foot chain link fence?
Either a four-foot chain link fence or a guardrail. A guardrail may survive longer than the fence. I'm not even recommending a chain, I don't even like the idea of chain link fence, but if you had to, a block chain link fence along that area, but I think...
So some sort of barrier?
Some sort of barrier. I think a guardrail would probably work, a wooden guardrail would probably work better.
It'd also hold up better.
What I'm saying, hold up better on the conditions that you're gonna be working with down there. And you got the, I mean, along the front of the property, there's gonna be any curbs or anything put in, or you're just gonna try to tie into that existing drive that's there, or what's happening there?
So along the front of the property, we were asked to pave along the frontage, so we're gonna have pave along the frontage and have Cape Cod berm along Morton Square.
So the Cape Cod berm is gonna be along the property line at Morton Square, or further in your retaining wall?
It'll be along Morton Square.
Okay.
And there'll be Cape Cod berm that'll tie into the parking lot as well.
Right, at the curb?
Yep.
So we're not gonna... Craig, wouldn't that normally be granite in that situation?
Normally, but on this type of roadway where it's...
Nothing there?
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot going on there. I think the Cape Cod berm, I mean, when you drive down in front of those houses, there's not a lot going on there, so...
I agree.
It wouldn't make sense to add granite right there.
As you drive down there, coming off of 27, on the left-hand side, MBTA lot is there. Is there a guardrail there? Probably one.
Yeah, I think there is a guardrail separating it.
And a little retaining wall.
Yeah, there's, on the low end of the screen there, it's called...
You got like two tiers there. You have, that's at the upper tier. It goes down the lower tier to get in here.
So Craig, and just to curiosity, I know this is a funky area, but when we go tying in the water and the sewer and the, I'm not sure, he's got power or something out there tying into the street, what are we gonna do about that asphalt that's there? Should we repave at least across the road to where the, where the water's tying in?
Yeah, so any patches that...
But I mean, I would just, I would want a patch. I mean, that's a narrow road that would just run all the way across, probably as far as where that water tie-in is, and back to the property line, just that rectangular area should be paved, you know, so that it's, so there's just a couple of trenches out there, because it's only gonna make it worse what it is now.
Yes, so they're showing the new pavement going like to the property line on...
They're going property line to property line.
Right, and that's pretty much where they're connecting, because...
I'm sorry, I missed that. I missed the new paving. That's fine. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. That retaining wall, is that encroaching on that driveway area? Well, what do you want to call it? It's not a street, it's not a driveway.
It's a right-of-way.
Yeah.
Right-of-way.
Is that, is that retaining wall gonna encroach on that?
Which one? The MBTAs?
Yeah.
No, it's not gonna encroach. It doesn't. So what happens is...
Retaining wall is here, the property line's out here. He's putting the Cape Cod berm here.
Okay, so this, this, what I'm getting at, this area's not getting any more narrow, because it's narrow as it is.
Exactly right. It's actually gonna define it by putting Cape Cod berm and then paving from here to here.
Okay.
So it'll clean that whole area up in front.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yep. I'll go after him.
Can you explain to me the...
Turn your mic on.
How many feet?
Paul, turn your mic on.
How many feet you have where these plantings are going, from the property line to the stone wall? Is that like four feet, three feet?
I believe it's between five and six feet.
Six feet? Okay. Are those, those two oak trees, are those existing, or you're proposing to plant those?
Can you go to the landscape plan?
The red oaks?
Those are proposed.
You're saying four-inch caliper you're putting in?
I believe it's two to two-and-a-half inch caliper.
Says four, four, on your map, it says four-foot di... Oh, that's the mulch, I'm sorry. Did you give any consideration on how big these selections are gonna get, like the white pines and the Colorado blue spruce and the red oaks?
So when we do landscape plans, we typically show plantings at maturity, so that we know how big they'll get when they, when they get mature.
Do you, do you know how big a white pine gets at maturity?
It gets very big.
Hundred feet?
Not in this case, but it could.
They do get a hundred feet.
Not here.
Colorado blue spruce, spreads quite wide, quite tall. I, I'm just questioning, with such a tight spacing, the selection of plant materials that you made here for these trees.
If you prefer different species, we could certainly entertain that. The idea being specifically with white pines is that they are nice and thick, they grow fast, and it'll provide instant screens.
Yeah, and if they're maintained, they can maintain into a, into a hedge farm if you want them that way, but a lot of times I see people don't, you know, treat them properly, so to avoid something that's gonna be a problem down the road with the, those selections seem to be awfully large trees for such a tight spot, but this... Would you agree with me with that, Phil?
Are you talking, these right down in here?
They got the, they got two red oaks that they're putting in, they got three white pines, and they've got five Colorado blue spruce.
But Paul, those, that area back there, I'm not sure if you know, if you're familiar with the site, but that drops off a lot. I mean, we're dropping off from the front, you know, probably five, six feet by the time you get to the back from where the front of the property is.
Yeah, I know.
And so you got some height already to the property before you get going, and we're gonna be adding a fence there.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's up to them to ma... I mean, they are providing something that's decent to try to maintain some screening and going on.
But again, it's like, you know, you see so often in these landscape designs, they don't really put attention to what, what it's gonna be in 10 years or 15 years from now, and it can create a problem. These, these selections are very large trees, you're 10 or 15 years, they're gonna be huge, you know? I mean, I just, I think there's, I know there's better selections that you could make... I mean, I just, I think there's, I know there's better selections that you could make in doing this, I don't know if a landscape architect did this for you, or--
I'm a landscape designer, by trade.
Okay. So, you agree with me that, I would imagine you would agree with me--
In a way, I agree with you, there's nothing wrong with red oaks, there's big trees in the area, we're trying to--
Yeah, well, I was just saying, you know, like, again, do you feel comfortable with the red oaks in that type of a spot? Do you feel comfortable with the Colorado blue spruce in that, in the white pines? Personally, I would never plant that way, you know?
The Colorado blue spruce get to be 10 feet wide, that's what they're shown at, so I know you said they get tall, which is, for the neighbor, a screen is perfectly acceptable. Maybe the white pines might be too big, but, you know, to your point, they can also be maintained and not be 100 feet tall. So, we're comfortable with what's planted, but if you have suggestions, I'd love to hear them.
And it's not, because you've got the small plan, it's not a, it's a four-foot diameter mulching, not four-inch caliper?
Right.
That was the mulcher?
Yeah, right, I see that. I don't agree with it, but--
Well, I appreciate your opinion. I know this has been something that's, and I'm not gonna enforce this time, but in the future when coming before us, these plans should be fully colored, the landscape plan part of it, and so, I understand the photos, which is good on each of the types of plants, but they should be fully colored when they're coming across.
Usually do that.
It does help, right, and I just, it just helps overall for all the board members or for the public to be able to see it.
Understood.
Appreciate that, anybody else have any questions? Is that all you have, Paul, is anything else on that?
One second, I-- Okay, so on your, on your picture up top, you show a red maple, in your drawing, you're putting a red oak.
If I did, I apologize, we'll correct that.
Okay. Anything else? Does anybody from the public wanna weigh in, oh, I'm sorry.
Quick question, the, back on the packet we got tonight, I think it's page five, mentions about the roadway--
I prefer not to discuss that packet.
No.
I just, that's--
No, no, no. Saying is, that Morton Street private way, the question is, who's gonna maintain that?
Again, that's, it's gonna be part of this whole discussion when we're coming up--
All right.
And, and the one thing is, some of, this might be the old landscape plan, it has to say "private way" on everything, you changed it on the engineer, so that just gotta--
It's on every plan, it says "private."
Okay, I must've pulled an older, the last plan.
On the landscaping plan here, it does say "private way."
Yeah.
Anybody from the public would like to speak on this? Come on up, man, please state your name and your address.
Good evening, Attorney Jennifer Allen for Murphy Coal and Oil and Mr. Mark Terry here with me. I just have some copies that I brought.
She still your boot, Bill?
Yeah, I was in one of those last year.
That's what I'm saying, she still yours?
Mine's probably--
It's not mine.
This is bad. It's bad. They shouldn't be putting those kinds of trees.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we are here today in opposition of the special permit and the site plan approval. As you're already aware, there's an issue with Mr. Caesar's access to this property, which is Lot 3, which has yet to be resolved. I was recently retained to investigate the rights of Murphy's Oil, his access, and private right-of-way. In examining the title to Mr. Murphy's property, Mr. Terry's property, and Mr. Caesar's property, which we ran the title all the way back prior to 1943, when that parcel 3, Mr. Caesar's property, was developed, parcel 3 was never granted a right-of-way. Murphy's Oil's lot, on the other hand, derived a private right-of-way from the prior owner, Samuel Paul, back in 1894, where he was deeded a free and clear, uninterrupted right-of-way over and across the 14-and-a-half-foot wide strip. That is shown on Plan 1 of the pictures that I had brought. To provide a better idea of the current lots, I also included the second copy of Plan 2, which depicts Lot 3 and the private driveway, along with the actual right-of-way that Mr. Caesar has to his parcel from Morton Square. Plan 3 is Mr. Caesar's updated plan that was submitted from him, which he, I see that he updated the public way to a private way, although I highlighted on that last plan the lot line and that stone wall to show where Murphy's Oil private right-of-way begins, and that Lot 3 leaves no access for Mr. Caesar. I also included the GIS map, which I believe you had seen before, showing Morton Square, which was highlighted in yellow, which is private, but where Murphy's Oil and his private way begins, and Caesar's access terminates. I have included also the last group of pictures, just of the site and the road and how it splits, giving you a better idea of the road and the width, including residential parking with the vehicles when they are actually parked there at the housing, and the tight access there. Not only does Mr. Caesar not have access via this private right-of-way from that stone wall down, but vehicles larger than 3/4 ton cannot reasonably fit on this road, and it will be substantially detrimental and damaging to Murphy's Oil's continued use and private right-of-way.
Does Murphy Oil use it for their own trucks?
We do, when we have access, unfortunately, we're frequently blocked--
Mark, you need to press the--
It'll go green.
We do when we have access, we're frequently blocked by both MBTA parking and the tenants at top of the hill. I do have two other ways out through my property that we can go, that is my preferred way, but probably 50% of the time, we don't have access because it's blocked. Sometimes it's not wide enough for me to even get my pickup truck through, much less my oil truck. I happened to take a picture of one of the times of squeezing my oil truck through, because somebody parked at the top of the street, where it's their right to park, they have the house there, but asking to put more trucks on something that I don't believe is they have the right to, but also, I have two other points of access to get in and out.
Right.
If he is blocked, it means he's gonna be coming through my property to have to get to his.
Right, so here's what I'd like to do, none of us are attorneys up here, I'm not gonna pretend to be, we received a multi-page letter of review of their title just before the meeting, from their attorney. I'd like you to have a copy of that, I'm also getting this to our town attorney, then I think everybody comment on afterwards, 'cause you have your opinion on the title, so I think you need to put a written together, you know, response to what they're coming up with, and then have a meeting of the minds and have it come to us before that, but I don't think it's our position to be able to come up with that meeting of the minds here, or as this board. So, I'm gonna ask the owner to ask for a continuance, 'cause we can't vote on it, or if you would like us to vote on it, you may not get a very good response, to a time certain in another two weeks or a month from now, when everybody can kinda get together and have a discussion and come back before us with a resolution. How's that sound? Okay?
I have one comment.
Go ahead.
Just for the record, the only connection I have with Murphy Oil, we spell our name the same way, there's no connection with me to them.
I haven't seen you at any of the family parties, so.
I'm assuming you're gonna request a continuance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would certainly like the opportunity, if possible, just to kind of frame issues in the same, sort of similar context, as Attorney Allen just did, have that opportunity, just because I think it may be beneficial, as the board was fortunate--
That's fine, do you have anything else to say?
I was just also going to add that we just received, again, Attorney McDermott's argument that was sent today, I didn't have a chance to review all of it, I had some notes. And at the same time, I was just going to move forward and say in conclusion, his proposed use would be substantially detrimental to Murphy Oil's use, but I don't believe this board should be determining property rights, as it would be up to the land court to determine access rights, if it went this far.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you or agreeing with you, what I just said is, it's not for us to determine--
Yes.
--that access. I do appreciate it coming before us, and I do wanna be sure before we as a board makes a decision on this, that, you know, there is a proper access to the property.
Exactly.
So, however that gets resolved, you, him, our town attorney, or you bring it before the land court, however that has to happen. Anything else?
Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to add something, I'm sure the, this attorney's going to point out to you, you went back to 1943, 'cause that's when things change, without any permission, but there's a change, but, you know, I did have some time to read through what we got at 4:30 this afternoon, page 15, he starts to discuss how they have the right-of-way by notorious and adverse use of right-of-way over driveway for, continued for more than 20 years. He actually goes in to say, they've had the use of it for 80 years. I've been managing that property since 1989, it's been my full-time job, I can tell you that parcel has not been accessed in all the time I've been there, except for two times, when the time they came across my property on a Saturday to dig in the lot to put a septic tank in, I came in to find my yard torn up by an excavator. That was two summers ago. The only other time it's been accessed was when a tree company arrived on my lot to clearcut a lot that had been completely wooded, in fact, I believe the town had to go down and stop them when they found out later in the day that it was your, I can't think of the name, the guy who handles all those things, he came and made them stop clearcutting, but they're saying that they've had use and access of that road, it has not been used, it has been a wooded lot until this summer. There's been two times since 1989 I've ever seen that accessed, times have been across my property to get there. So--
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let him speak for a minute, and then we're gonna move this on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will try and keep my remarks brief, but I just think that it may be beneficial to frame the, frame the situation for the board's review later on of these issues, and I certainly do agree, and I think we may all to some extent agree that any property dispute, right, lends itself to a civil action if necessary, right? When we are here, certainly looking at the special permit and the site plan, so certainly I think we've addressed some, but not all, of the technical elements, and I think that that had come to light in the September meeting as well, that we've put together a plan that I believe can meet the requirements of both the engineering and planning departments, and this is for the use of a small oil delivery business next to another oil delivery business. So, I would respectfully submit to the board that the proposed use is not more substantially detrimental to that neighborhood than the existing neighboring use, and certainly we can address, if the issue is whether or not a 3/4 ton truck can fit down the street, I spoke with Mr. Rogers, we can certainly supplement that, my understanding is that it can. I think that, you know, certainly we have presented in our packet, which I understand you're gonna send to town council, alternative theories here of how this right-of-way is a legal access. Mr. Terry and Attorney Allen brought it up, you certainly have my submission, but I would suggest, among other things, that, you know, particularly the section on prescriptive easement is informative. Prescriptive easement, once the use is open, notorious, continuous, and adverse for a period of 20 years, that prescriptive easement vests and cannot be extinguished by mere non-use. I have my legal citations and briefs in there, I'm sure that can be discussed later, but on the whole, our hope is that we have and can present a project that meets not only the intent of the zoning bylaw, this board's requests, right, as such, and the planning department's requests, and really, again, focus on whether or not Mr. Caesar's use of, you know, he's expanding a oil delivery business he already has in Stoughton, he serves families in Stoughton and Brockton, and so, really, I would hope, I'm sure the board will give attention to the use in that neighborhood, the proposed use of the project, we really would suggest that it's not more substantially detrimental than that, any access issue would be better addressed in a civil forum, not so much in a context of a Mass General laws, Chapter 48, Section 9 analysis.
I, I don't disagree with you as far as the access, but this board has a long history of issues with property lines and access that we will not grant a permit, especially a special permit, with as an access dispute, and so, if that gets resolved, I wouldn't take this to vote, and if you did, it's, I would--
Oh, no, we're gonna request a continuance.
--guess it would get denied. So, that's, that's the only reason I'm trying to say that, the access issue in our mind is a pretty big access, because it's part of planning, and it's no sense in us approving a project that you can't be built or even accessed because of some other legal action that needs to be taken at some point in time.
So, if I could just close, Mr. Chairman, referencing the plan, I know Attorney Allen referenced some plans, and the packet before you, tabbed in blue, is one of the plans that Attorney Allen presented, and this is the plan that's referenced in Mr. Caesar's deed, it is from June of 1943, certainly well more than 20 years ago, and I think what's informative is that Mr. Caesar's property is parcel 3. The driveway for Samuel Paul that extends some 300 feet here certainly encompasses, I would submit to the board, parcel 3. Who has the right to that right-of-way, I think is the separate issue, but in terms of access and how, I know Mr. Terry had suggested that, you know, persons aren't accessing the property or haven't for, since 1989, I mean, I haven't been here, so I don't know that, I'm certainly looking at it from a legal perspective, I have to imagine that at some point, from 1943 forward, somebody accessed that property, I mean, all of these properties front on Morton Square, I think is kind of the plain and simple of it, right? So, so somebody's been accessing those properties for 80 years along Morton Square, and particularly the plan referenced in the deed for this property and every deed back to 1943 does show parcel 3 for about 98.19 feet, following the private way that then terminates in Mr. Murphy's lot. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we'll certainly be requesting the continuance, Mr. Chairman, that's--
Okay, can we have, would it be one month, would it be--
Yeah. No offense to attorneys, but I don't think anything's gonna get done in two weeks.
And certainly not enough time for us to get submitted and--
Right, so, I would recommend the March 13 hearing date.
That's even quick, isn't it?
Okay, let's request it till then, then, so you request a continuous till the March 13 meeting?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can I have a motion to--
Motion submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I just wanna clarify, I'm going to send what the attorney sent, Attorney Allen, are you gonna, I just have maps, will you be presenting anything to me in writing with this? Okay.
I guess, we want to present it to our attorney, so if we're gonna send it, I mean, we'll send this right away, but I would suggest you send something in writing that we--
Yeah, if I could get something, obviously-- Right, something in the beginning of the week, beginning and middle of the week would be great.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if we could bring up the second item, the, how the engineer for the, the gas station is now online.
Great, thank you.
We're not, they're not quite there yet.
Yes.
Okay, returning to item number two--
They're not a cousin?
Excuse me?
I thought you were brothers.
I'm sorry, returning to item number three. I'm sorry, returning to item number three, 1580 Turnpike Street Gas Station Site Plan Modification Request. Do we have somebody on now that can discuss this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening. For the record, my name is Hal Trubber. I'm a consulting engineer with offices in Dartmouth. I was, first, I want to apologize, I logged in 10 minutes late. I had a meeting in Milford and I hit some traffic on the way back, so I appreciate your accommodation. So as you know, I was involved with this property back in 2020, five years ago during COVID. At that time, Prestige owned the property. I think you're all familiar with that gas station. At that time, we had a site plan approval and building design with the Prestige image on it. I believe I did send a copy of what was approved previously with the site plans. So what happened after COVID, Prestige decided not to build the gas station and they sold to another fuel operator. The other entity, they own, I believe, 15 gas stations throughout Massachusetts and they own, they have their own image. They had a contractor who was also working on another three gas stations for this same guy, and they asked him to be consistent and modify the existing entrance or the proposed entrance of the building. And as you know, we're here for the modification of the covered porch in the front. So basically, they do have a different image, and the contractor at that time didn't think that it's a site plan item. He thought it's an elevation and he didn't need the site plan approval for modification from the planning board. So honestly, this is, this is an honest mistake, and that's what I was told. And he did discuss it with the building, I guess halfway through the construction, he found out that he needed the review and approval from the planning board. He did stop working on the front entrance, and I did submit pictures of the, of what it looks like and the rendering of what was approved, and we hope that you can review, and we kindly ask for your approval tonight.
I'm going to comment only for the fact is I was on the board when this came before us, and this was a long time permitting, if you remember. The look of that building was kind of really a major concern as far as the location. I do realize that that part of the building is not seen from the main row because of the orientation of the building, but it is seen from Page Street, and it is seen from the people that look at the building, you know, when, excuse me, when they come into the site. If you ask my opinion, and it's only an opinion, it's an architectural thing, I don't think that that's a good-looking facade compared to what we actually approved. Again, it's an opinion, but that's just my thought. I agree. Yes.
Question to the applicant or to the person addressing this. What was the reason for the structural change?
He said that that was, that the company that did it, they bought the building, they have a different look of their buildings. They've done other ones, they just decided to change it so that it was going to be what their branding is. So this is their branding instead of what Prestige had for branding, and that's why they changed it.
I have another concern. The way that, I guess, I'll call it a billboard, I don't know what else. What would you call that?
Billboard.
A billboard. Behind it is going to collect an inordinate amount of snow and rain.
I can't see whether they put a cricket back there or not.
There must be.
There must be something. Must be something behind. Could you tell if there's a cricket? I mean, I don't know what the plans say. I can't tell from that drawing.
I'm sure, but I think it's, we're really, if the aesthetic structurally, it's not, it's not, this is, this is fine as far, but again, it's the aesthetic of the building. And again, the, it's kind of confusing because not to me, I was involved in this project for a long time, but the, since the item had to do with the front elevation of the building, the contractor did not assume, did assume that he didn't need to get the, but again, I mean, we're here to.
I mean, obviously, he did have to get it, and you're here before us, and like I said, in my opinion, we're not getting what we initially approved, and it was a long time getting to that design and that style to get there.
I agree. I was, I was the one behind the design of the building. I was, and if you recall, I did work with Prestige. I've been, I've probably designed 25 of their other locations, but unfortunately, we're in this situation right now. And again, it's up to the board, whatever you decide. I'm not here to push anything to anyone, so.
Comment, Richard? My opinion, and again, it's an opinion, it's aesthetic, concerning the aesthetics, that billboard sign to me is out of place, and the change in the covered area from the original design with those pillars has been reduced to a nondescript entrance, and I think it's kind of goes against the architecture of this part of New England. I mean, if you need a sign, and it seems like the, the original design could certainly support the name and the number of lights, I just personally don't care for it.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
All right, one of the things that, first of all, I wrote down after reading the letter, did your contractor actually look at the drawing? Because you should, he should have been given the original drawing.
He did, he did. He said that he didn't know he had to come before us.
Those were the plans, those were the.
The building department, but he didn't come before us.
Okay. But getting back to, also, there's the cupola that's not on top of the building that was in the original drawing. And what happens is, looking from the backside on Turnpike Street, I see the back of the building there, and again, what do you plan on doing there? Is that where signage is going to be or whatever? I haven't seen any.
There's a drive-through that goes through there, but there is, there was supposed to be some facade treatment. I don't recall. I have to go back and look at the drawings. I've been waiting for that to come through. There was something back there, but that is a drive-through area, so there is some signs and some other stuff that's going there, because that's where the drive-through is coming around on that building.
Okay, so they're going to.
It's good, right. There's going to be an access, that road comes around, because that's where they're going to be doing the drive-through from.
One other comment is the fact that going back to the original design, that kind of falls into play with both the Dunkin' Donuts that's down a little bit further, also the competition company farms, they have that style in the front of their buildings. So it's kind of deviating from that style.
Anybody else, nobody from the public here? I have a, go ahead.
In addition, the, I'd like to know what the, there's quite a bit of significant difference in the style of lighting and what the, how bright this place is going to be. I mean, we don't have any description of.
It doesn't look like the lighting's changing.
They have three vertical light strips on the proposed new building.
Right, and there's three, there's three lights on.
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
They got one, two, three, four, five, six lights.
No, I'm going to show you what he's talking about. There are these three vertical light, these three vertical light strips, vertical light fixture on the building.
There's also three horizontal.
And then the.
Over the windows.
There's three horizontal.
And then there's these horizontal light fixtures that are lighting up.
So what are these light fixtures for? Do we have a cut on these? Do we know what they do? And the reason I ask that is we had an issue before when somebody did something similar to this, and it ended up becoming like a, like a light show. And I want to make sure that that's not what we're having here.
The original design was so muted with their light. I mean, there's three lights.
Yeah, the other design. The original design has the nice downlighting.
Right.
Exactly.
And by the way.
And I understand too is that if you remember correctly, that this building faces residential property. And if you put in some really bright types of lights, LED lights that are shining off of that, that's going to affect, there's a big impact on that property as it is, but then you're going to add to that impact with those other lights.
It could also be turned into stock market tickers with something with words going across them.
Yeah, or the chain house. And by the way.
I don't like this new design at all.
It's under your purview. You can say if you don't like it, it is.
Right, here's my opinion is that I believe that this would be not a minor modification, that would be my opinion. And if they want to come back before us to do a full site plan review on the building, we can go do that, because my other concern would be that I didn't pick up on the lighting right away, but if they're changing lighting there, are they changing lighting on the site that we've already approved? And what does that whole thing look like as far as the site lighting? Because I know that was another discussion that we did have at that point in time, is how much lighting is going around. I know there's a lighting plan done on it, so I don't know whether that's changing also. I'd like to know what else is being changed that they may not think was part of what the review process was when we went through this originally.
So what? So Mr. Chairman, what I hear is that you guys are denying this as a minor modification.
I'm asking for, no, no, I'm going to ask for a vote to see that, so I could have a motion. Motion to deny this as a minor modification. You have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So it's denied as a minor modification.
Okay.
So for them to continue the way that they are, they would either have to come back with a new application.
A public hearing.
Public hearing and a new application for the look of that.
Or major modification.
Major modification to the site.
Or. Or build it the way it was designed.
They go back to the original plans.
Question, Mr. Chair. This project here, we extended their building authorization.
We extended the site, we extended the review, the permit, we extended the site plan review permit.
Right. Was that for one year or two years? Because we're coming up.
Once, once they pull a building permit. Once they pull the building permit and start constructing, they're vested. They pulled it in time.
Okay. That's all, I'm just trying to make sure that's.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'll just go back and let them know what their options is.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Item number seven, a new public hearing will be held.
You didn't vote on it, Mr. Chairman.
I did vote on it.
Oh, they did? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Unanimous. We voted on the, we had a motion, we seconded the motion, we voted on it.
Sorry, my bad.
No. Okay. Item number seven, we have a new public hearing will be held to petition of the applicant property owner BP AZ Holdings 40 LLC for the site plan review under section 10.6 for site improvements surrounding buildings 1, 2, and 6 to include parking lot restoration, restriping, traffic markings, signage, new sidewalks, landscaping, and restoration of the stormwater basin. In addition, they are seeking an after-the-fact approval for alteration of the right-of-way and site improvements in front of buildings 3, 4, and 5. The applicant is represented by High Point Engineering. The properties are located on Tosca Drive at the following building numbers and addresses. The building number 1-290-312, Tosca Drive. Building number 2, 250-280, Tosca Drive. Building number 3, 171-179, Tosca Drive. Building number 4, 101-111, Tosca Drive. Building number 5, 71-85, Tosca Drive. Building 6, 200-232, Tosca Drive. Assessors map 32 Lot 7 and map 31 Lots 36, 38, 41, 45, and 47 in the industrial I-zone district. Can the representative please speak?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Nicole Langley. I'm an associate with High Point Engineering. Oh, there we go, sorry. Turn that one off. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Nicole Langley. I'm an associate with High Point Engineering here representing the applicant for the Tosca Drive projects. As you read in your opening, the applicant purchased six buildings on Tosca Drive, what we're calling Buildings 1 through 6. This map that you can see on the screen identifies where the buildings are. Building 3 is the, sorry. Building 5 would be the closest to Center Street, and Building 4, Building 3, Building 6 is the long, thin one, and then Buildings 2 and 1 in the way back. The applicant did do some site improvements at Buildings 3, 4, and 5. They added some Cape Cod berm to close off some of their open space areas in the front of the building, and they did add additional parking spaces that were to one pervious areas, they converted it to striped parking spaces. They also added some parallel parking spaces within the right-of-way of Tosca Drive in front of their buildings. So they had discussions with both Craig Horstfall, the Assistant Town Engineer, and the Town Planner, Bill Roth, about the improvements that they did, so they wanted to see some analysis on how those improvements impacted the existing conditions. So they engaged High Point to look at that analysis and also prepare a site plan review for the three buildings in the back of the property, 1, 2, and 6, where they wanted to do some more proposed site improvements. So for, as you can see at this plan here, these are comparison plans that are showing Buildings 3, 4, and 5. The plan on the left is the existing, the pre-constructed conditions based on an ALTA survey plan, and the plan on the right is the current conditions based on a recent existing conditions survey by ALTA Survey Group. We color-coded the changes just so that they kind of jumped out at you. Some parking spaces that existed, you know, in the back corner of the property were restripped. That lawn area on the left side of the building was converted to nine parking spaces. The lawn areas in the front were trimmed with Cape Cod berm, and parallel parking spaces were installed in front of the Cape Cod berm within the right-of-way. So that is for Building 3. This here is Building 4, similar, this is 5, I'm sorry. Building 4, similar improvements. They striped dedicated parking spaces on either side of the building. They did some new concrete walkways to the egress doors in the front of the building, and then they added some additional parallel parking spaces along the right-of-way on Tosca Drive. And then Building 5, again, they had, they took the walkway where you had kind of three separate concrete walkways that entered to the egresses. Those were kind of combined into one continuous walkway, and additional parallel parking spaces were added within Tosca Drive. We did do a site, a drainage study for these improvements, just looking at how these improvements impacted the drainage system. We, okay, thank you. So those studies analyzed the capacity of the existing drain pipes within Tosca Drive to see if the existing system had enough capacity to handle the flow from these site improvements. And the results showed that the pipes did have the adequate capacity. So if we move on to the proposed improvements, and then I can go back and talk a little bit more about some additional improvements at the existing. The colors here, I didn't, we didn't get it done in time to send it to you. But that, yeah, so this is the layout plan around Building 1. So what this plan proposes to do, and we did have multiple discussions with both the engineering department and the planning department to come up with a layout. We're adding that landscape island in the middle and providing a dedicated truck traffic to separate the delivery trucks from the everyday standard vehicles. We're proposing some new landscape areas around the building. We're going to re-stripe parking. I believe Building 1 had a total of 41 parking spaces, and we are proposing to add one additional parking spaces, so we have a total of 42. And then there's an existing, you know, unstabilized area between that existing basin and the building. We're proposing to do a crushed gravel surface in that area to kind of stabilize the non-stabilized area today, so you're not getting sediment washing off into the basin. There is an existing fence around that area today as well. What you do see there, there is. What you do see there, there is an existing detention basin that was constructed on the property of the applicant, but it is in a, in an existing drainage easement, and it was constructed for the benefit of 333 Tosca Drive, which is formerly Gold's Gym across the street. I did provide a copy of the Gold's Gym grading plan. Okay. So that grading plan shows how their design worked and how they are discharging to that We are, we were asked by the town to maintain it. It has been unmaintained and overgrown. We are proposing to clean that out, remove any of the, you know, vegetation that has grown, clean out the inlet and outlet control structures, and install new riprap aprons. I did look at the original design. It was something that was before the Conservation Commission in 2010. This system was designed with a sediment forbay, not a sediment forbay, my apologies, designed with a storm scepter 1800. That was a stall just upstream of that head wall that discharges into the basin. And I also had a copy of the original O&M plan, which stated that deep sump and hooded catch basins were installed throughout the property. So the reason I'm mentioning that is we did receive technical review comments from both engineering, planning, conservation, the police department, and the Board of Health. One of the comments was that we construct a sediment forbay for pretreatment upstream of the head wall, but based on the design that was approved in 2010, I don't believe that's necessary if there's a sediment...
Have you inspected that that's there?
I have been to the site. I haven't looked at the cover, but I can. I will do that.
I mean, if the storm scepter exists, I'm not sure whether we would need a forbay or what your opinion is.
Yeah, I don't know that it's actually in the ground or that it's been maintained, so we can look into that and then...
We can look into that. And also, in the original O&M plan, the responsible party for the basin and the storm scepter is the owner of the gym. So again, my applicant, the applicant's willing to, you know, restore that basin. They just don't want to be responsible for maintaining it, because we are not discharging to it even with this new design. We made sure that we kept their drainage system separate from any of our improvements. Okay, if you want to go to Building 2 and 6. So these are the improvements for Building 2. Again, all of the improvements for all of these new buildings are just in the front. We're doing a reconfigured parking configuration in front of Buildings 2 and 6. Today, Building 6 has zero striped parking spaces, and we are providing, I believe, 20? Yes, 20 with one handicap parking space. And Building 2 today has, excuse me. Building 2 today has 31 parking spaces, and we are providing 50 with two handicap parking spaces. We are proposing new walkways and parallel parking spaces along the right-of-way for Tosca Drive to kind of separate the building parking lot from the access way.
That area is going to be a poster child for why you don't build parking lots a certain way.
Yeah, exactly. You're not supposed to back out into the drive.
We call it a no man's land up there, of a sea of asphalt.
Put the whole building in the middle of that. What is it?
One other thing to note about Tosca Drive is across from Building 6, Tosca Drive changes from a public right-of-way to a private road. So all of those improvements that you see within the right-of-way are on the private portion of the road. There is, so those are most of the improvements.
So is all the parallel parking we saw for all the buildings that you have in the right-of-way, those are all on private or are they in the public right-of-way?
So the parallel parking that you see on the inside of those islands?
On the outside of the island, like the outside here.
Those will be for the private. So can I approach the...
Yeah.
Good point. Okay. Or actually, I could show you right here. Sorry. So these parallel spaces here would be for Building 2, and they count toward their parking count. All of these would be public spaces.
And they're...
Although they're in the private right-of-way.
In the private right-of-way. But there was another building, as I was going to ask earlier, but now that we're on it, they were showing parallel parking in the right-of-way, but was that in the public right-of-way or was that still...
That is the public right-of-way.
That is the public right-of-way.
That is the public right-of-way.
Do we need to talk to anybody else other than us to approve parking spaces in a public right-of-way? That would go to the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yeah, technically, it's under the Street Commissioner's purview. However, they're before you for site plan review for the other aspects of it, so...
Right. No, we can do a site plan review for the other aspects. I just don't think we're going to be able to approve anything that's in the public right-of-way.
And that's understood. We did have that discussion. We are aware of that.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure we talked about that.
Yep.
But typically, whenever there's a change to the right-of-way or whatnot, they route it for engineering, planning's comment, and planning board's comment. So it's, so part of the way we structured this application was kind of the after-the-fact permit of changing the site in front of those buildings, adding those parallel spaces in the road, granting, you know, if they grant, if you grant a site plan approval for that and the other changes, then we will then take it to the Selectmen.
Yeah, we just have to write, after we condition the site plan review, that that would have to go for permitting. The right-of, the spots in the right-of-way would have to go for permitting before the road.
Correct, yes.
That would just be one of the conditions of our permit, that's all.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
So then, if we go back to Building 4, we did do some site observations at Building 4, and we did notice that there is a depression. It's not on the property associated with Building 4, but it is in the access easement adjacent to the property, and it was ponding. It was collecting water and ponding. So as part of this application, the new site plan review, we are proposing to regrade portions around Building 4 within the access easement and in Tosca Drive to promote positive drainage and get the water to go where it was originally designed to go. The drainage for the Buildings 1, 2, and 6, we are going to maintain the existing drainage patterns. Because of the increased pervious areas on the site, we are able to reduce peak flow at the points of analysis studied for this site. As of February 7th, last Friday, we did receive a tech review letter from, as I mentioned, from engineering and planning, and we, this plan here is different from what you see up there. This addresses most of their comments. One of the comments was to update the existing condition survey to show the correct right-of-way. There was a change in the right-of-way where it transitions from public to private. There was a former cul-de-sac there that's no longer active. That has been updated by our surveyor. And we also asked our surveyor to locate the tree line at the back of Building 1. There are some resource areas close to Building 1. There's riverfront as well as a BBW, so we're going to locate that tree line. We are not proposing to clear any trees. We're not doing any work near the tree line, but it's just to show clarity of where we're doing the proposed work.
Nicole, do you have a sense or at least a number, the amount of square footage of asphalt you're adding as opposed to what the landscaping you're adding? Do we have a net value of any of that?
I do. It is in the drainage report. I don't have it off the top of my head right now. And we're actually doing additional open space islands based on this design, so that number will change, and I can get that for you.
Okay, yeah, if we can get that, that would be good.
If you see, we're adding this landscape island in front of Building 2, which is not shown on the original plans by reconfiguring the parking lot, and then we're reconfiguring the parking area up here to add additional landscape areas. And we do have a full landscape plan done by our planner, and that will be submitted with the revisions.
Okay.
I told her that since they were still in the revision stage, that it was not worth to keep on printing page after page after page to discuss it, show it in a colored format, and then get the final things. China, the Paper Reduction Act. And I think by some of our comments, and Craig can attest this, we requested, they had large expanses of parking, and if they could add more landscaping and still meet the 20-foot stall, the 24-foot drive aisle versus having, you know, a 32-foot drive aisle, adding landscaping to mitigate, you know, the additional impervious area that they did in front of Buildings 3, 4, and I don't, I don't know all the numbering.
I mean, it's such a sea of asphalt down there. There's got to be a way of increasing some landscaping down.
And one of the things when we, that we actually like about this is when you get to that Building 1, 2, is that building in the back?
Yeah, that's 1 and 2.
Is where it becomes a private way, it's just a no man's land. They're actually, it's going to look like a road. You're going to have a berm, you're going to have parallel parking, you're going to have a curb, a berm curb, you're going to have a sidewalk, you're going to have landscaping, and then you're going to have their parking. So it's, it's much more efficient from a design, from safety. You know, we've really, the applicant and then the engineer have really worked very well on, you know, taking our suggestions, and, you know, they're making it better and more efficient for themselves, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I did find that number. So based on the current design that you have in front of us, we're decreasing the impervious coverage by 2,454 square feet, so it will be increased additional based on this new design when the numbers are run.
Okay, so you're in a net of the...
Net green, yeah.
Yeah, so we qualify as a redevelopment.
Yeah.
So, you know, one of the things that's real tricky with, you know, Tosca Drive and the buildings on Tosca Drive is a lot of the loading docks are in the front of these buildings, right? So you've got trucks pulling in and out of the roadway. It's really not how you would design an industrial park today. So we're trying to work within those parameters and coming up with something that makes it look more like a conventional roadway, particularly when you get towards the end of that road, like Bill said, it's just wide open. So we're trying to define it, make it look like, you know, it's got some structure to it, and give the drivers some sense of where they should go. So even beyond what you have in front of you, we've added some more landscape islands at the end of the, the public way to help direct traffic.
The right here, where you see the darker, that is the transition from public to private.
Okay.
And this was the former cul-de-sac. That's the corrected lot line.
Yeah. We think this is just a positive net benefit. Sorry, Mr.
Question. You mentioned additional parking spaces. What's the total number of parking spaces you're anticipating adding?
For all of them?
Yes.
So what did I say? We're adding one for Building... Does I have one?
Well, let me preface, if you go out there now, some of it's just asphalt, and it's not even striped. So it's, it's, so it's kind of almost unquantifiable, because they're, they're actually formalizing an area that people just randomly park and making it more efficient.
Yeah, but based on the numbers, based on, you know, what we're seeing out there and what we're increasing, we're increasing probably 42 parking spaces for the three buildings in the back.
Okay. To our Assistant Engineer, how is that square with the plans for the new intersection of Canton Central and Tosca and the lighting sequences there? I mean, that's a pretty, pretty difficult intersection at morning and evening.
Yeah, so all this work is far away from the intersection. They're not changing any of the uses out there, so by adding spaces, you're not necessarily adding traffic. So it won't have any impact in that regard as to the volume of traffic.
Yeah. They're just re-striping any area.
I know the area very well.
Oh, yeah.
It is a wide open space. Thank you.
One other thing that I should point out, and everybody's probably familiar with this, is when you drive down Tosca, Tosca Drive, and you get to the end of the public section and transition to the private, there's a good hump there, right? So there's a drop, and these plans will lessen that.
Okay.
I think you've got like a 5% is where you're bringing it to. So they're going to, they're going to ease that grade.
You can ski down that slope. You can ski down that slope.
Yes.
Yeah, we are proposing to flatten that out and redo that existing retaining while that's there. So it'll be a, I think, 5% maximum will be the new slope.
Thank you.
Are all these buildings now occupied, or is there a lot of vacancy, or do you know?
They're mostly occupied.
They're mostly occupied, good.
The, one of the questions that I have, and I'm not sure the, I'm looking at the far building, and I see that you have parking right up against the building. You have grass there?
This one?
Yeah, that, this building?
That very last building?
Yeah, I believe I'm on C 301. And what I'm looking at is the parking looks like it's up to a little grassy area where people have to walk behind the vehicles rather than in front of the vehicles. What I'm looking at is there's no sidewalk there.
There is a sidewalk. So what we, there is an existing sidewalk today, but it doesn't meet ADA. So we are proposing to construct a new concrete sidewalk with landscape islands behind it and in between the concrete walkways that go to the actual doorways.
Okay. Right, then I didn't pick up, I'm trying to pick up on this drawing.
Understood.
You're looking at 301, Peter?
Yeah.
That's the grading plan.
The condition is a little different on the next building. So he's talking about Building 2.
Oh, Building 2.
Building 2 does not have that sidewalk?
No. See right here?
It doesn't exist.
See right here?
Here, there's a sidewalk for Building 1, but now Building 2, they can't provide it. It's more beneficial to have the sidewalk here and define the roadway.
Okay.
Because if they put it there, they'd push everything too far that way, and you wouldn't be able to get that sidewalk.
Since this is a redevelopment, they're, they're doing the, they're doing the best they can to retrofit where, where practical and feasible.
What you will see in front of Building 1 is there's a mix of loading dock spaces and pedestrian vehicle spaces. In front of the pedestrian vehicle spaces, there are existing like planters or retaining walls that kind of create that area in the, in the front of the wall. Like you'll see these parking spaces, there's a little planter retaining wall in front of it.
Previous position that I had by the management that I had to do was design a parking lot, and we put the parking, the walkway by the building so people weren't walking behind the cars.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, that's what I'm trying to get at.
No, I understand what you're saying. I believe there's space to walk between the vehicles and the, and the existing planters. If you look, yeah, C 301, you can kind of see the stairs, and there, there's a little space between the parking spaces. Yeah, I think it's about 3 feet.
But that's going to be grass, correct?
No, it's going to stay asphalt.
Oh, it's going to stay asphalt, but the cars will be...
In front of this, in Building 2, it'll stay asphalt. Building 1, they have some landscaping and a sidewalk, and that will be reconstructed.
They batted a sidewalk on Building 1.
Okay.
Yeah.
And one of the, I went to Google it, and between two of the buildings, there's a big iron beam going from one building to the next.
Yes.
What is that for?
I asked myself the same question. I'm only, the only thing I could think of was that because we have a provision in our zoning bylaw where you can only have one structure per lot, that they connected them to call it one structure.
Because it's 11 feet high, I believe is what...
That's my theory. I don't know if that's the case.
Okay.
I didn't research it that much. The only other alternative is to prevent, you know, taller vehicles from going through there, but...
Right, but it's 11 feet high.
All their trucking stuff is in the back.
It's one of the mysteries of Tosca Drive.
Yep.
One of the many.
Yes, okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple here. On, on the very front page of your drawing here.
Yes.
So essentially, Building 1 and 2, what we're seeing is kind of existing paved areas. That's really not expanding very much. So in the... So in the final, you're still going to maintain a lot of vegetative area up in the, up behind building one and behind building two?
Correct. We're not proposing any work other than striping behind these buildings.
Okay. And what, what's that, mostly just wooded area?
It's mostly a wooded area. Now, this is where your resources are. There is some wetlands back there, and farther back, there is a river. Those areas are just for the trucks to get around the building. There are loading docks behind the buildings.
Okay.
We're going to stripe, like I said, a path with direction arrows for those trucks so they know which direction they're supposed to travel.
I know this probably isn't your jurisdiction, but the fencing along the railroad tracks, has that been viewed? I mean, is that in good condition, or is it, is there no fencing?
Again, we're not proposing any work back there, so I haven't analyzed that.
I don't know if that's a, the other question I have is we're off to the left-hand side where I think it's Riley and AA Will exist. Does that road connect through, right up there?
I think it's just a dirt path.
Yeah, I don't believe it's a paved road.
You probably get to where the dirt bike will.
Okay, so I'm just, you know, I just want to make sure that we've got no trucks coming from AA Will coming through Tosca Drive.
You might be able to get a four-wheel drive pickup truck, but yeah, you're not driving an 18-wheel.
Okay. It's pretty rough ground. Where are the dumpsters?
The dumpsters today are behind the building.
Okay. What about tomorrow?
They will remain behind the building.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public on? No? Okay, so I'm Nicole, I'm assuming you're going to ask for continuance?
Yes. Our goal is to submit final plans and reports to your office next Tuesday. So we'd hopefully like to be continued to the next hearing in February. We've been working on this. We're ahead of the game.
Okay, then, the, going to be tight and close. We, we want to try to accommodate the applicant because they've been, they've been, worked with us very, very well. I know Craig's off next week, but Nick's here, so, and we kind of know the direction we're going to go. So I would say we will, if they get it to us next week, we can get it. I may not get the planning board report and pack it to you on a Friday, probably on a Monday, because it's, that's just, we need a little time with, especially from vacation and that sort of thing. So long story short, request a continuance to February 27th.
I have a motion to request a continuance February 27th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Nicole. Mr. Chairman, may I ask one question?
Sure.
One of the comments is a request from Jim Conlon to have the tree line added to the back of building one. I did speak to my surveyor about that. He has not picked that up, but he is going out there. I just don't know if I'll have it in time for this application, but I will have it in time for the RDA. Is that acceptable?
Right, and, yeah, I think that's acceptable.
Okay.
The, the whole reason for that is to determine whether or not you need to make a filing with the Conservation Commission. So it's really not pertinent to this.
Why would they need to make a filing?
Because if they, in doing their work in the detention basin, they could be doing some work in the riverfront area that involves clearing a tree, some trees.
So, yeah, this is the riverfront here.
It's just clipping it.
The buffers. We're making sure we're not touching the riverfront, but, you know, they want to see it on the paper a little clearer, so they want to see where the tree line was, which is what I mentioned earlier.
So you're going to submit an IDA to the CONCOM when?
After this approval. And again, it would be just based on the recommendation.
You may have to, right?
We may have to.
Well, she's still going to submit the IDA. So depending on the location, they might not even have to file with Conservation.
Right.
And in my opinion, I would think whatever you, even if you do have to do something, it's going to be the minimal application, which is an RDA, to get it done.
And it's, and it's strictly for cleaning the basin, so it doesn't affect the site plan.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the site improvements.
I get hesitant on.
I know you do.
Anything before going to, I'm Nicole, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I know you do.
It's always us last.
I, I know. It's just the way that it started, that it wasn't required, and then it became a possibility because originally, we weren't going to touch that basin.
Right.
And then we did it at their recommendation, so that's when it became a possibility.
And we appreciate this applicant, you know, stepping up and doing the O and M on that pond. It's really important, and this is a great opportunity to get it done, so.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, moving on, general business, meeting minutes.
I read them, had no comments.
Cameron, thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
No.
None.
Good. Can I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of Thursday, January 30, 2025?
So made.
Draft number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. As for any other business?
Just to update you, I met at 6 o'clock today. I met with the Board of Health to discuss the Aqua for Protection changes because they have some purview. Next week, at 7 o'clock, I'll be meeting with the Conservation Commission to go over the wetland bylaw changes. And at 7:30, also, I'll be meeting with the ZBA to go over the wetlands changes because the zoning wetlands has the ZBA as the authority, but, you know, that's one of the reasons why we're getting rid of it.
Lucky you.
So just making sure that we cover our bases, so when we go to town meeting, the different boards that have some jurisdiction over these bylaws that they've met and that hopefully they've, they're in agreement. So it's just kind of checking the boxes on that.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
It came up during multiple conversations, the hole in the ground, that building procedure. And when they were building, they were actually on top of the sidewalk, so to speak. Should they have been forced to go and put some type of like, a tunnel going, you know, like a scaffolding and then covered so if anything fell off during construction?
They closed the sidewalk.
No, they didn't.
There were some issues with the construction. Code enforcement went out and, and those, and access, safety, and all that were looked at, addressed from what I understand.
But going forward, just from my own information, is that a zoning thing, or is that something we should?
That's more a building and construction portion.
It's a building.
Yeah.
Okay, because like I said, it's, I'm looking at that, and it's like someone could very, after hearing different conversations, something falls off the building, someone can get hurt. Motion closed?
So made.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.